I'm going to call the meeting to order and sorry, we seem like we're a little late. We're actually not, that clock is off by a few minutes, so that's why we waited. Okay, so Joy, will you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like if we could move McClear Engineering to the bottom of the agenda, right above closed session.
Okay, great. Okay, our consent agenda tonight is approval of the minutes of the November 13th, 2012 meeting, a liquor license approval for Fraternal Order of Eagles, and approval of claims in the amount of $152,171.07. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Rasmussen and seconded by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes, but abstain on the minutes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Okay, next is normally public appearances, but we don't have any on the agenda tonight. So we'll move to our resolutions. We have resolution number 2937, approval of the road use tax report.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a yearly required reporting for our RUT. We could, Joy, could go through the numbers if everybody likes, or we could just confirm the resolution.
I would approve the resolution.
Thanks, Darren.
You're welcome.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
The next resolution is promoting Sean Worley to wastewater superintendent. Sean here tonight?
He is.
Oh, there you are, right there in front. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's a nice thing for you. So, do you want to say anything?
I would. You know, we look far and wide, of course, and I think we found what is the best candidate to fill this position, experience, and a love for community, and we're really proud of what Sean's been able to do, and look forward to him leading the way on our new improvements, and I think we should give him really a round of applause, because this is a great. Thanks, Sean.
Great, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, it was moved by Hallie, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, next resolution is vacating water and sewer easement, the Roosevelt addition. Want to comment on that?
Yes, Your Honor, this would be the easement that was established some time ago on the northern 75 feet of the present site of the Hy-Vee gas station, and we went through the different departments, could find no need to actually keep that easement, or reason that it was purpose, so that's what this is about, just really to sign that, vacate that over to them for their uses. All of our public infrastructure would be in the right of way there.
Any questions? Motion to approve?
Move to approve resolution.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Hallie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, resolution accepting work for the construction of the improvements known as Fairfield, Iowa, Street Paving Project 2012.
Yes, would you like to say a couple of words, Melanie?
Not really, but I can. The two resolutions, the next two resolutions are for the assessment project, special assessment project for 227th.
Can you give us amounts that would go in this, the street paving? Or do you have those?
Yeah, yes, I do. The assessment project was handled, the contracting was handled through the county, but the city's portion was only for 227th. The total project cost, let's see, for 227th was $361,54889. That's design and construction. The city's portion of that is $66,47074. So the, almost $50,000 of that is through the special assessment, the remaining $16,000 is out of your general fund.
Okay.
The assessments, after your second resolution, we'll complete the assessment schedules, and then you'll act on the assessment schedules at your December meeting.
Okay. Any questions, counsel? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the first resolution.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any additional discussion or questions?
And 227th, is that the highway, is that roadway, is that in the city?
That's the road in front of the American Hotel. It's about a quarter mile between Highway One and then to the west.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the next resolution, final plat and schedule assessments. Any additional questions regarding numbers?
On this consulting, do they pay a portion of the taxes for the roadway, or is the city covering it completely?
Ma'am?
Can it be extended to the city?
Should I? Sure. Go ahead. Go ahead, Melanie.
It is, the assessment is put onto the taxes, I believe it's 75% of the project cost is bared by the property owners along that road, with the 25% getting covered either by the city or the county, depending on which portion of, which side of the road they're on.
And ma'am, just so you know, that prior to all this happening, there were, there were public hearings to answer these questions. Okay.
And as far as annexation is concerned, yes, this was annexed more than a year ago, almost a year and a half ago, that this portion of roadway was annexed into the city.
Okay, any additional questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Hammers. Joy, I'm going to have you, please call the roll this time.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing Burbach Aquatics to initiate and perform Phase II service. Now Kevin, you want to discuss that a little bit?
Yes, Your Honor, this would be basically moving forward with what our pool project is part of the portion of our recent referendum, and this would allow for those guys, when we're prepared, allow for them to go ahead and do engineering for the pool that we have designed, of course, the pool that was represented in the pictures that were forwarded around and shown on the paper and otherwise. So this would be the next step in the process of developing that project. We, of course, are not ready, we don't have it in this year's budget to do those, that engineering, substantial cost of the project, of course, a percentage of it, but this would basically move us forward in agreeing that they will be the people who will do that service for us at the time that we acquisition it.
And this is based on the recommendation of our committee as well, they're included in this?
Yes. We have been working with Burbach so far, I want to go ahead and let everybody, just remind everybody of that, so for the public, we have been working with them, I think, for approximately a year and a quarter, so done a really good job for us, so.
Okay. Move to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Hammers?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Joy, please call the roll.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the adoption, excuse me, the public hearing for the adoption of the Fairfield Commercial Industrial Residential Urban Revitalization Plan. Joy or Kevin, were there any written objections to this plan at this time?
There were none.
Okay, and before we open the public hearing, I'd like to, I think, John, that I think it'd be a good time for you to come up and just discuss the plan, give us the highlights.
Thank you. There are copies of the plan in the back, and I guess I'll precede my remarks by mentioning that we sent out 4,300 notices, courtesy of Joy and the staff here at the front desk, to occupants of dwellings in the city of Fairfield. We also sent out another 3,000 approximate notices to titled owners of property in the town to comply with the state statute that says when you update your plan, when you reconsider your plan, when you adopt your plan, if you haven't had one before, that you give the public notice of what you're thinking of doing. And what we did in this situation is we noticed people that we're going to update the plan, and the reason we're going to do that is we've actually had this plan, and I think there's some terrible misunderstanding about this, because I saw some email today that made it sound like we, as a city, were foisting this on the public, as though it was something that had never been there before. And I thought to myself, where do people get these kinds of ideas, and why do they distrust us so badly? We have had this plan since 1990, and we, for the first 10 years of the plan, granted residential tax abatement, as well as commercial and industrial tax abatement in this community, and it amounted to a three-year abatement on improvements, depending on what the state statute says. The state statute is where this comes from, and it says if a community, and several hundred communities in the state of Iowa have done this, wants to incentivize either new construction, improvements that are substantial in residential properties, in commercial properties, or industrial properties, that you can pass a tax abatement plan. To do that, you first of all have to have an urban revitalization area, you have to have it mapped out, you have to say whether there's any parts of that area that are exempted from the plan, or that don't qualify for the plan, and then you have to set certain limits that are also set by statute. Now, for industrial and commercial, those limits basically are fairly large, because if you have a factory that's going to add a wing, and they're going to spend millions of dollars, that still means jobs increase in the tax base, and 100% taxation of industrial equipment and expansion in the facility. Commercial, it's the same way. In residential, you have a different formula for assessment of the property and so forth, but you still have an abatement process where you get a benefit from that, and the abatement on that is the up to $75,000 of structural improvement, and that is, again, something that the council opted for versus a five-year plan. They want to grant people that choose to improve their residential properties, a three-year plan of abatement, 100% of their tax for the first three years, on the increment of increase in improved value on their property, up to $75,000. So that's what's being added to the plan.
John, what you just said is that if I add an addition onto my home, the existing value of my home is $100,000, and my addition is going to be $40,000 on top of that, is where my assessed value is going to land at in the future.
Right.
Okay? And the only abatement on that property is going to be that $40,000 addition.
That's correct.
Correct?
You apply for the abatement.
And that's only going to be for three years.
Yeah.
I'm still going to pay the taxes that I had been paying on my $100,000 home prior to that, and I'll continue to pay that through those three years, it's just at the end of those three years, my new assessment is going to come into effect, and I'll pay my tax on that new assessment at that time.
That's exactly right, Darren. And the reason towns do this, and the reason that they will forgive tax for a period of this three years of abatement, is because in the end, it benefits all the taxpayers in the community. You add to the tax base of the community, you spread your taxes around a larger tax base, whether it's residential property, commercial property, or industrial property. We've been doing this in Fairfield since 1990 on commercial and industrial. We did it for 10 years, up to 2,000, on the residential. We had a lull in residential construction. The city council in 2000 decided that it doesn't appear to be incentivizing the public to make improvements on their residential property, so it was dropped from the plan at that time. Now, we have an ordinance that allows this kind of tax abatement, that's been in effect ever since 1990, and that ordinance will follow the adoption of a new revitalization plan. But before we can go, whoops, to a new revitalization plan, we have to adopt the revised plan.
Leaning on that door does that, it hits those switches.
I thought somebody was telling me my time was up. They do that. Anyway, what you end up with is, in the end, incentivized property owners and occupants who improve their dwellings, they improve their businesses, they improve their industries, and your net tax base grows. And that's the whole premise underneath what we're trying to do here as far as the revitalization plan, but this is the starting point. First, the council has to adopt the plan, and then they have to go through three readings of the ordinance that references the newly adopted plan. So when we sent out 7,000 notices documents, we didn't know whether we'd have seven people show up, or 700, or 7,000, but we figured there'd be some interest in it. I've probably had two or three dozen calls from citizens that wanted to know, not so much about whether, what the plan does, or why you have a plan, but they were wondering if they came tonight, if they could apply for an abatement. And that's not quite the way it works. What will happen is, the council would like to pass the revitalization plan, but that's still up to the council tonight, after they hear from anybody else that might have come here for the public hearing. After they look at the revitalization plan, if they adopt it, then they have to go through an ordinance reading. Tonight, there's an ordinance that's the next thing on the agenda. Then they have to go through another ordinance reading in December, and another one in January, assuming there aren't objections to the ordinance, or they fine tune the ordinance to everybody's satisfaction, they pass the ordinance. The way the state code reads, they need to have this in place for our county assessor by February 1 next year. So we can do that, practically speaking, in plenty of time, we still publish it in the newspaper, and we'd be up and running for a new abatement period, and a new ordinance, or a revised ordinance and a revised plan by February 1. So that's the way it will work. So this, we're talking about improvements in the year 2013. Not to discourage anybody that may have already done something, we still have a plan for industrial and commercial that's in effect right now, under an ordinance that's been there since 1990, and people have applied for abatements under that. There's no trick to that. Businesses in town, up around the square, that have made an improvement, businesses that have added some space, and some of the new businesses in town, they have asked for tax abatements. That's between them and the county assessor. That's the part that the council here has nothing to do with. Once you apply for the abatement over here at the city planning office, I see Scott Vaughn there, and I know Joy, and Becca, and some of the other people at the front desk will greet you about applying for abatement. But when you apply for it, that's the beginning. You fill out the forms, there are a couple pages, I don't know if they're attached to the plan in the back, but there's been a revised abatement form that shows residential on it, too. Once you apply for it, it gets sent up to the assessor. She has a little different calendar than we do, as far as where we're going with this. January 1 starts a new assessment year for her, so if she knows you're doing an improvement, she'll go look at where you are on January 1, but she's going to be more interested on where you are on February 1, when this ordinance is in effect. So we basically tell people, well, if you're residential, you probably don't want to do your improvement if you're asking for an abatement until, at least don't report it until after February 1. If you are going to have the assessor look at this with you, believe me, she will go out and she'll look it over good, then it's her decision, as far as what she thinks the improvement value of what you did structurally ought to be. And if she says, as Darren uses as an example, maybe he does $75,000 worth of improvements, but she says that on his other $1,000 property, the increased incremental value for tax purposes is $40,000, and it's a $140,000 property, not a $175,000 property, that's between the owner and the assessor. And at that point, the assessor has her own set of rules, she has a state code that says you can appeal, you got a border review, and some other things that she uses that we don't. But we do start the process with the application for abatement, you then go to the assessor. Most of the time, the assessor comes in fairly close to what you've asked for, for abatement. So that part of your improvement doesn't get taxed, then, once she approves an abatement amount for three years. End of that three years, whether it's Darren's $140,000, or maybe she decided it was $175,000, that extra $75,000 taxed onto your tax roll is going to mean in year number four, your property value is back where it really was when you had it assessed, and you're going to start paying taxes on a larger amount of property value. That's going to help all of your fellow citizens, because the incremental value is spread around the community, and the net tax base that everybody pays tax on. When you look at this thing in schools that we go to, as far as how it works, theoretically, you could look at a possibility that enough of these kinds of abatements can result in an actual lessening of the tax asking. Value of your tax base increases enough, your tax asking may be less. So in the end, the theory is that this will do good for the large mass of citizens, at the same time that it gives and incentivizes any owner that's interested in an improvement a reason to do it now. And, you know, what better time than now? We've got an economy that, you know, politically could stand to boost, and adding this residential feature to the plan adds a boost, and the community, we haven't had a housing study in a while, but everybody believes that we have housing needs in the community, so why not add residential back? So I think that's the thinking that's reflected from the council and their committee, and that's the thinking that is in this residential addition to the urban revitalization plan. Now, this is supposed to be a time for a public hearing, so you don't just want to hear me publicly. It's time, you know, if some of you want to be heard, I'll be here to answer questions, the council will definitely entertain your questions, and I don't know if there's anything the council wants to ask me before I sit down, but that's my explanation of what you're here about tonight on the public hearing.
Counsel, do you have any questions for John?
I really don't.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and if you want to come up and speak, I ask that you, actually are a resident of Fairfield, within the city limits, and that you state your name.
Or you own property within the city limits.
Oh, yeah, or you own property within the city limits, yes, thank you, John. Go ahead.
I'm Beth Williams, and I live at 2296 Walton Lake Drive. One, does it apply to, I know it must, but it applies to rental units as well as homeownership houses, right?
Yes, it does. John, do you want, do you want to speak to that?
I knew that was true, but I just wanted.
Residential just falls under the commercial.
Period, period.
Rental falls under commercial.
I was a little late, does it apply to new construction or only renovation?
It'll apply to both.
Fine, okay. And cancer, anyway, I went to the county commission this morning, the county executive, and I told him, I said, I have friends that live out in Canada, they're still ticked off, because they really didn't participate in the debate on Sondheim, they just kind of, I'm sorry. A lot of the county folks feel like they, and due to whatever reason, the county executives did not really involve, because it wasn't their bond issue to do Sondheim, but they still feel a disconnect. I've heard things like Fairfield takes the air out of the county, you know, that we get a disproportionate amount of money to do things with, and they're trying to deal with old sewer systems, and all kind of infrastructure all over the county, and policing, and fire, and they really need to feel very much a part of us all. So they already have, that man and Mr. Neff, just here, I'm sure, there, I'm sorry, anyhow, they intend to really be on top of this, the county does, and any way they can interface, I think they really are really interested, okay? So I just wonder if there's any way that this could gently leak a little bit over into the county. There is no way to do a cooperative on this countywide, is there?
Actually, actually, any tax valuation that's done, when my property here in the city increases, I'm also taxed by the county for my home.
Right.
So my increase would be on my county taxes as well.
So it's a shadow effect, it benefits the county in the long run due to that, but the county residentials really can't find any way to piggyback with us, right?
And, John, you want to speak to that?
County assessor and the county board have talked before about the ability of the county to do an abatement plan also.
I would love to see that.
It's a little bit broader subject when you get on.
Right.
There's a little different formula for evaluating county residential properties than there is urban residential properties.
Right.
And ag land is a totally different proposition, so if you're doing an improvement on that, it has two different formulas applied, so it's complicated, but it's something that can be done.
It's worth it.
The district supervisors and the assistant county attorney, we've copied them on what we're doing as far as this abatement plan. That doesn't mean they'll do it, they have to figure out if it makes sense.
Right.
But they know there's a way they could.
Well, it just seems to me that, I was telling them a little bit this morning, it seems to me if we just worry about Fairfield rising out of the context of Jefferson County, we just shot ourselves in the foot, because our whole county, plus all the counties we're beginning to co-op with on various governmental entity things and things, we got kids to worry about, we got kids doing drugs, we've got medical problems with the kids, we've got young people coming in and out of town like a revolving door, because they can't get stable work, and their education process is a little bit messed up. And it seems to me if the city and the county can get more and more thinking of themselves as a cooperative unit, then we can start concentrating on the people more, and the people we need to concentrate on, especially as the elderly, and the poor, and the underbelly of the communities that really aren't self-sufficient at this point, some won't ever be again, and the young ones that we need to get back here and keep here. And we can only do that, I think, if we start thinking in terms of ourselves as a broad community, and quit wasting our talents and our money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Diamond, West Taylor Avenue. I have a question, and then also a comment. So I understand the theory is that this urban revitalization plan incentivizes improvements, both commercially and residentially, and that eventually, after three years, it increases the tax base. But my question is, what, and I just found out, first time I knew this, that we've had it in Fairfield since 1990, so my question is, what data do we have that shows, that is, you know, numbers, financial numbers, that shows that it, you know, this sort of tax abatement? numbers, that shows that it, you know, this sort of tax abatement definitely incentivizes improvements, you know, versus if there wasn't that tax abatement?
John, you want to come to the front to answer that question?
And then I have a comment, and I think, you know, maybe I'll.
Let's let John come up and answer that question, then you can finish with your comment.
Okay. I happen to been around as long as the ordinance. That means I'm pretty old. But let me give you an example, because there are some things you need to understand about what's in the plan and what works and what doesn't work. One of the things that's in the plan right now is there are nine areas in town that are circled on the map, that's attached to the plan, that's here in the clerk's office, and those are tax increment finance districts. And that's a different form of incentivization, and it's a different effect as far as the way you get your net tax base increase. Now, an example of something like that would be the Park Place down by the junior high. Tax increment financing built sixty-five new dwellings down there back in the early to mid nineties. That was funded partly by infrastructure that had to do with what they call tax increment. The increase in value in that neighborhood helped pay for the streets and sewer and water, and the net result was, I believe, seven to eight million dollars of increase in the net residential property tax base down there. How much?
Nine point six.
Nine point six. Tracy Vance from the Economic Development Association has it in his head. I just know that it was a substantial increase, and how that worked as far as the tax increment financing part of the statute, though, is that when you do the overall tax abatement, which applies to all the properties in town, that happens to be an area where you can't have it both ways. So if you're in a what we call tax increment finance district, or they abbreviate it and call it TIF, your TIF district is excluded from the tax abatement opportunity to have your property or your improvement to your property abated a hundred percent for three years. So first, we have to understand that, that there's nine areas in town where if your particular property happened to be the beneficiary of a TIF treatment, you won't get the abatement. Now, the thing is, each time you have a TIF in your area, you set up what is called an urban renewal district for purposes of your TIF. It might only be a block big. The wagon wheel apartments down here, that was about a billion four project, that went on to three lots in a neighborhood of five lots. That was how little the tax increment urban renewal district was. But that wouldn't qualify for tax abatement like this. The rest of the neighborhood around it does. So there's a special provision in this revitalization plan, and it's in the footnotes on the map, that says the council can take special action to allow the tax abatement request, even though you're in one of those nine urban renewal districts that benefited from a tax increment finance for some project in them. Other TIFs in this town are things like the convention and visitors, the convention center. I'm going to have to go to the map. South Gate was a TIF.
Carrington Point.
Carrington Point.
Yeah.
Is the same thing goes in the square, all the down low street and everything, the center city thing, is that a TIF?
That's not a TIF. But there are nine of them shown on the map.
They're cultural districts.
They're in the footnotes at the bottom of the map, and those things, you have to have special permission from the council to have your abatement applied. But except for the things that were actually TIF'd, you'd still be eligible. So this was intended by the council to apply to all the properties in town if you want to do a residential improvement, except for those that already had a tax break because of TIF. Other than TIF, there isn't any exception, and so residentially, we're opening it back up to the same thing that was there before two thousand, when we discontinued it. Yes?
So what data do you have that, outside of the TIF areas, that this kind of, offering this kind of incentive actually creates more development?
Well, let's take a couple of situations in the commercial sector. You've got things like Hy-Vee, and you've got things like Walmart that were, I'm supposing we added at least five million dollars of tax base from those, and they're just in the last two or three years. So you've got some large commercial improvements that qualified for tax abatement in the last two or three years.
So they got tax abatement?
They got tax abatement on it. But there's others. I mean, take TSC, take Orlslums, take the commercial strip out there, that there have been improvements in facilities or enlargement, come and go. Those kinds of things commercially, when they decide they're going to do something, they sit down with the city, they sit down with development association, they sit down with people in the community that can show them some of the ropes, and this is never intended to take something away from the taxpayers, because the ultimate result, again, is the overall expansion of the tax base. When that happens, the theory is that eventually, maybe it's three years from now, but you'll see an improvement as far as what your tax asking is. That's the goal.
So the question is, would those areas have been developed without a tax abatement?
We don't know for sure. We just think that it helps incentivize, if your corporate headquarters at Ames or Ankeny or one of these facilities, or Chariton or whatever, is looking at what your community has available versus other communities where they're deciding on an expansion, it helps sell them on the expansion.
Also, John, I think, he may be at a disadvantage, because you're actually asking him a philosophical question, rather than a question he can answer with.
It's actually a numbers question.
There's probably a lot of facts that John and I could get our hands on if we could go back, you know, and do some Googling, but I think the basis of what you're asking is, sometimes it's hard to say, yes, this would have happened without an abatement. But I think the important thing here is that we do know, I think, as a nation, a national history illustrates to us, that targeted tax breaks, the rail system, international, or, you know, the interstate rail system that goes through this very city, targeted tax breaks, you know, incentivizing that, the interstate system, land-grant colleges. I mean, throughout our history, incentivizing through direct tax benefit is how the government, it's the basic standard tool in our belt that begins our process when people are looking at investing in our community. What do you have, you know? Do you have TIF districts? First off, do you have abatement policies? Also, with our aged infrastructure and our aged housing stock, it encourages those of us, I live in a hundred-year-old Victorian, so it encourages folks that live in older homes to do improvements and not necessarily be, quote, penalized for that for three years. You, I don't want to say you get a freebie, but you do have to eventually pay taxes on it, but it's an incentivizing for all of us to do improvements on our homes and to do new developments. Basic fundamental block, though, is the abatement. It's the first offering. Tracy, would you say a word or two to that?
Sure. Tracy Vance with the Fairfield Economic Development Association. More to this philosophical question, I can tell you, I'll give you a couple examples, but one is, when I have companies, site selectors come and talk to me about if they want to choose Fairfield as a place to do business, the, I mean, every single one says, what tax abatements do you have? Do you provide TIFs? And if you don't, you're not considered anymore. I mean, you have to have that. So, I mean, do we know which ones, if we say yes, we do, which one, or are we eliminated because we do have it, or is there some other reason why they're eliminated? It's hard to tell. But I can give you an example, in the county, a recent one the county did for H and M, HCM Plastics, Jim Hamas is out on Kelp Avenue. He was considering doing an expansion, ten thousand square feet, and because he was taking on a new customer. Well, certainly, he went, he petitioned the board supervisors to do a tax abatement because he was building that into his ability to get that piece of business. So when he costed out what he had to do to price his business, he was considering his expansion he had to take and the ability to forgive, have those taxes on that increased square footage for that three years. And so that's one that, you know, you could probably say, if he wasn't able to do that, get that tax, but he might not have been able to get that customer, because he may not have been able to be competitive and get his pricing down. So that's one example that, you know, I think is a pretty good one on, that I think hopefully answers your question.
Yes, a city without incentives packages, the ability to give incentives to development is a city a leg down in today's economy, because it certainly is competitive. I know Tracy can speak to that, and it's very, very competitive.
And Jennifer, I'd just like to say that several years ago, when we were, when we had, discussing this topic, we actually did a kind of an informal survey with the people who, particularly residential, that got that abatement when we had it previously. And, you know, I don't remember the exact numbers, but probably nine out of ten of those said, you know, we were going to build anyway, so we did. And so at that time, we felt it wasn't useful for an incentive. Now, several years later, when we look at it again, and those of us who are, you know, in these chairs and working with Chamber or FIDA know that, you know, we've had some people not move here to Fairfield because they can't find the appropriate housing, and we want to be able to, you know, make that tax base broader, because as we all know, our property taxes have been going up. So we felt that it was an appropriate time now, you know, again, even though I'm not a big fan of it, I could be swayed to say, okay, I can get on board with these points, that, you know, it's a good time to do that. Do we have scientific data? Not exactly, no, to support that position.
Thanks. I'll just finish up. That was actually the comment I was going to make, is that, it's more to the resident, the need for residential housing here, and I'm not sure that a tax, sorry, I'm not sure that a tax abatement for residential developers is the dividing line between whether they'll develop here or not. For example, about six weeks ago, I was here in a city council meeting, and there was a developer from Cedar Rapids that's doing a condo unit, and, I mean, the thing is that they already know that Fairfield needs housing, and they know the market, you know, is here for, you know, for rental housing, that there's a need for that, so.
But they've also been incentivized, incentivized to come to do that here. They were here once before and didn't realize as much of an incentive as they had thought necessary the first time around, and the climate has changed so that there is more incentives for him to do that development. He actually increased it from what he felt he wanted to do previously by the incentives that he received.
Okay.
So there is a direct correlation with giving an incentive for a developer to come into a community to build. It's not necessarily that he was going to come here and do this anyway. I don't believe he would have come here to do this anyway if we didn't give him some sort of a device by which he could improve the value in what he was doing.
Yeah. Okay, well, I mean, I'm just trying to protect the tax base here and keep the tax dollars here and not, you know, give them away gratuitously to large outside developers. That's the point.
And we can appreciate that. Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, sure.
Clyde?
Yeah, I just.
If you want to come up, come up and state your name, please.
Yes, ma'am. Hi. Clyde Cleveland. So I just wanted to clarify. So anybody that improves their residential property will not have to pay taxes on those improvements. In other words, their assessment will not go up for three years. Is that, is that what this says?
The portion.
On the city's portion. The city's portion. Their other portion may go up, just like everybody else's goes up, but the improved portion, the amount that would increase, that increases because of the improvements they made. Right. Would not appear in their assessment for three years. It would be delayed for three years. Okay. Okay. So the state's portion may still go up.
It can.
Or the county.
The county.
And the school. And the hospital.
And the evaluation on the original value. The house, the building itself, the valuation of the original value could theoretically go up. A lot of things theoretically could alter your evaluation.
I know, and I don't know exactly how they did it in Kiakuk, but about ten years ago, Kiakuk did a total moratorium on property tax increases for improvements for, it was at least three or four years. And they had a boom in construction and improved properties, and it really made a huge difference in the city. So all I, that's why I came tonight, because if that's in here and it's significant, that could incentivize, which I think is way more important than encouraging new construction personally. If you can encourage the people that have both commercial and residential properties to improve those properties, that helps everybody. It helps the economy, plumbers buy, hire people, electricians in construction, and it increases sales tax revenue and all that other stuff. So anything we can do to encourage existing, improvement of existing inventory, I think is really important. So I'm glad that's in here. I wasn't clear on that. So I think that's my, the only other thing I wanted to bring up, as long as I'm up here, is Section O bothered me. I spent about an hour on the phone with Ed Malloy this morning, or this afternoon, after I read this, and he and I both had a question and a concern about O, which is, let me hear, relocation. And I would like clarification on this, because this concerns me, is that anything that we do here actually forces the removal of people from their home or their business and that kind of thing. And I would certainly like the council to consider that this be changed so that nothing in this plan will cause the relocation of any, anybody from their family or home, because I just don't see a need for that in this, in this plan.
Only if they were to choose to temporarily relocate in order to do the improvements, would it necessarily cause that to happen.
Okay.
During construction, they wanted to go.
Oh.
Be in hotel room while they.
Okay. That should just be clarified in here then, I think, but that's, that's fine. So you're not going to use eminent domain in this plan to move anybody out of their house, or?
Yeah, unrelated process completely, yeah. This is about, you know, abatement, setting up, as John aptly illustrated, setting up potential TIF districts for further incentivizing, which would be a little bit more, it's a more aggressive incentive, definitely, but, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Clyde, it's a good question. We have to have relocation language in, partly to meet the state statute requirements to do abatement, but also because there's a bunch of federal regulations that go to relocation also. I'll give you an example of something years ago, probably twenty years ago, we had some community development block grants where we did buy people's properties, and the neighborhood was leveled and a new form of housing was put in the neighborhood. The developers from Des Moines and Iowa City put up multifamily housing. They got some abatement. They had to assure both the state and the federal government and the city of Fairfield that families that were affected by the community development block grant clearing of those residences that were literally torn down from a, quote, blighted area, an urban renewal area, would be relocated to their satisfaction. And they were given relocation grants which included moving costs, they included help with securing things like rental deposits, arranged leases and so forth, so nobody was put out on the street, so to speak. So there is that side of relocation that is meant by relocation. You're hitting it right on the head. But we haven't done that as a practice in the city. We've had a couple of CD, BG, community development block grant neighborhood clearings with new structural improvements in the last twenty years, but that isn't the focus of the larger plan for abatements for home improvements and structural development. That is exactly what you're talking about, is improving the facility the person lives in, adding to the floor plan, the three-season room, whatever the family decides on. That's what we want to help with and incentivize. The other side of the incentivizing is, we're just like the rest of the country in some respects. We've had a housing contractor slump in this community. We haven't had as many starts as we had ten years ago, and that's part of what's a reflection of the economy in general in the last five years. But the idea is, we have needs. We know we have needs. We have a demographic that we think, you know, is crying out for more of this kind of stuff, and the council recognizes it. And that's where the focus is on this, but you're absolutely right, there is that question about. But you're absolutely right, there is that question about relocation, does it mean this or does it mean that? The idea of relocation, as far as what we have historically done, we've complied completely with the federal, state, and our local rules as far as what has to happen with relocation. But our focus is definitely not in making anybody move. This whole incentivization is to let people improve what they have, exactly like you talked about.
Abatements may have been a part of processes where people were relocated, but the abatements weren't the, the cause of that. They were just involved in a project that...
Is tenant implies renter?
Pardon?
Tenant implies a lease or a renter, not a homeowner?
You must be the homeowner. You must be the owner of the property to receive an abatement.
The owner'd have to cooperate with you if you were the tenant and were making an improvement. The owner would have to help apply.
Okay, but the tenant can be the homeowner that, due to codes or whatever, would be required to move maybe during the...
You're talking relocation of tenants is what you're asking?
As a result of construction.
What's tenant mean? Implication is if somebody's been there a year or more indicating that it might be renters, it might not. I can imagine if somebody's adding on to their home and with codes, people say, "Well, you really shouldn't live there because you've got the whole kitchen ready," you know?
Well, the part of the process that, that has to do with relocation would probably not be the abatement application process. It would be a simp, it would be a different direction. In other words, if we had community development block grant money to compel some changes in the neighborhood, we'd be talking about the tenants and the owners, and we'd be meeting with you. But that isn't the focus of this. This is a plan that's intended to allow everybody to seek the abatement, that's eligible to seek the abatement. You come in, you apply. If you're a long-term tenant and you're doing an improvement, if you're adding the three-season porch or whatever it is, and you're going to spend $30,000, and your owner's cooperating with you, it's going to get filled out, and it's going to go up to the assessor. The part we don't have any control over is what the assessor thinks of the improvement. And that's between you and the assessor, and there's a whole set of administrative procedures, possible appeal and things there too, depending on the value that's determined.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Tracy.
Yeah. I'd like to, I think, clarify one thing. There was a comment made a couple of minutes ago, and I think John confirmed this with me, but there's a comment about what gets abated. Was it just city taxes, was it county taxes, school taxes? We're talking about all, all, all taxes get abated.
Right. In other words, your property assessed value, if it goes up $40,000 in Darren's example, that's going to get used for school, it's going to get used for the county, it's going to get used for the city tax, which is a fraction of it, and the hospital, and some different tax bodies that request a levy beside. So, you're being abated from all of those taxes for 100% for the improvement. Not just the city tax.
Yes, the value the improvement dictates.
The improvement, the assessment is held off for three years, you're just not touched for three years.
That's what we're telling you.
Left in place, so the others can't get touched.
Right. If you, if you, in a smaller projects, if you look at the value of it, rarely is it going to be the, the, you know, the impetus or the catalyst to actually do a major improvement of a home. But it's a nice incentive to offer for those who want to do it. It's not, at least that won't hold them back from doing it. That's the theory.
There's a lot of unimproved homes in town. I mean, I just thought about moving here a few years ago, I started studying, and we get the census and just say, "Okay, there's this many housing units, and this many dwellings, and this many empty homes." There's a lot of empty homes in Fairfield, according to that, in the last census. So, I'm saying, and you drive through town, you can see what we should have implemented, could easily be done.
Are there additional comments?
I wanted all of you to comment.
Hi, my name is Christian Nguyen. I live on 140, 185th Street. I'm not just completely clear with the last comments with Clyde. I haven't heard the word zoning to come up too often here, but, so, if a big contractor wanted to come in because of this incentive, I get the incentive idea, it's very clear, and why someone would want to do that on a private level or a company, but if, under this incentive, a big company wanted to come in and build a big Hy-Vee, that kind of thing, a big piece of land, under this, could many homes be taken to be used? You know, he used the word eminent domain. Call it what you'd like. He, he says that's not the intent of this, which I understand what he's saying there, but under this revitalization, can that occur? And is, and how is that set up so that the public understands that through this, you know, people, some people are wanting to just improve their home, and that's a wonderful thing, and they're, they're held off for three years? But all of a sudden, once this gets voted through, could some big company come into town and want to expand in an area, and now the whole, under this plan, everything's, these new areas and rezoned, you know, a lot of us are just kind of in the dark sometimes? Could many homes be taken?
Can I speak to that?
Yes, John, please.
I've been representing the city since 1987 in court. We have never taken private property to help a private developer in that kind of an endeavor. It's a good question, but we, that has never been the policy of the city to do that. We have not done it, and I don't think the policy's ever been changed. If there was a single instance I can think of for eminent domain for a public purpose, it would have been the airport. And I will say that we did, we had nine eminent domains out there back in the late 90s. We settled every one of them, and anyway, we did it at a price that was probably twice the appraised value for most property. It isn't that way now, but anyway, we settled with each farm family that we had to deal with to expand our airport runway. That's the only instance of eminent domain where we went in in a private property situation and insisted that we had to have it for a public purpose. As far as these community development block grants and some other acquisition of property in town that went for TIF projects and so forth, in every instance, it was an arm's-length negotiation, not an eminent domain, that resulted in the city having the property or the nonprofit group that built a city structure as a result of that. So, we have not used the court system or eminent domain or condemnation for the kinds of things that are suggested in your question. And that's still not the intent of the council 25 years after I've been on board. I've never heard that, so I want you to know that.
If I, if I can add one thing to, to this question about using eminent, eminent domain to take property for an economic development purpose, about five or six years ago, the state legislature enacted legislation that barred cities and counties from doing that. I think it was about five or six years ago that that happened. So, so that, so eminent domain cannot be used by a city or county for an economic development project. So, that's, it was, wasn't the policy of the city, and now it's, it's, it's encapsulated in, in state code now.
The Iowa Supreme Court in the Spirit Lake case said exactly what Tracy had just told
you the legislature finally did. The legislature reacted to the Supreme Court saying, "It better not look like that's what you did, or they'll strike it down." So, private property rights have been protected both by the Supreme Court and by the legislature.
I just wanted to add that we've had tax abatement in place here in Fairfield for commercial and industrial since the 90s anyway. This ordinance is simply adding back the tax abatement for residential.
And also, I just want to include that for a process like, you know, a development to come in, and there'd be a rezoning that would lead to that development occurring, there's a lot, a lot of public hearings processes involved in that. There's a rezoning, is this a property that the community wants to rezone? There's a lot of questions, a lot of processes that need to take place before that would ever happen, so...
So, so this does not, this plan does not affect zoning?
No, it doesn't. They're, they're apples and oranges. I think the important thing to, to think about is, it's in a vacuum. This is, this thing is in a vacuum. It is for tax abatement purposes and to allow you to set up, you know, TIF districts. Urban revitalization are about regentrification. They're about stopping blight in older buildings and about encouraging affordable homes. That's basically what they're about. All this can do is help the citizens of Fairfield and help the city. It hurts no one.
Addition, well, we have, I think we have an additional comment before we get to the council. So, yeah, would you please come up?
I'm Lisa, and I have a lot here.
I'm sorry, Lisa, will you say your name again?
It's Ashelman.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a few questions. So, it said in the proposal, there's some limitations, and I wanted to know a little bit more what they were. And I underst, could that also be in design also? And, and it probably depends on the category. And then, maybe along with that question is, I know ag land is different than vacant land, and I just wanted to know a little more detail about these limitations and some more of the specifics.
I'm not sure where you're specifically talking to, but you would, you know, you would have things like setback laws and, and these kinds of things that you, you know, that are already in place.
And they haven't changed.
Like, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't build right on the property line, that kind of thing.
Right.
So, may John, maybe you want to add to that?
Well, the limitation that sticks out first is the $75,000 cap on residential improvements. That's set by the state code, so up to $75,000. There isn't that kind of dollar limitation on commercial improvements or on industrial improvements. If you want to put a million-dollar wing addition on your factory, create more jobs and put in more machinery, you can get an abatement on that, depending on what the assessor thinks it's worth. Other kinds of limitations, you have to operate inside the zoning ordinances, which Connie's talking about, the setbacks and so forth. They apply regardless of what kind of tax procedure you're going through, whether it's abatement or tax increment finance or one of the other methods to incentivize. It's still limited to operating inside the rules for what you can build in that zone and so forth. We're not changing any of the zones, but you still have to operate inside the other realm of, of the code. So, that's there. Another restriction or limitation is the fact, which I was explaining earlier, about these tax increment finance districts. If you've got a four-story senior housing apartment complex that got a million-dollar TIF, it's not going to be eligible for this particular tax incentivization. You're not going to get a tax abatement on that if you've already had the benefit of another statutory incentive procedure. But that kind of limitation is restricted to nine places on our map attached to this plan, and each of those places has had the benefit of another procedure. So, that is a limitation, but it's not something that is going to restrict anybody else in the community to apply for tax abatement if they want to do an improvement. So, that's what's meant by the limitations and restrictions.
Okay, thank you. So, a few more questions. So, I, I understand that sometimes when there's the general plan and then the plan changes, it's not requ, I'm, I'm talking more about residences here, that it, it's not required to tell the residents that there've been some changes, and then they come and they find out, "Oh, I'm not compliant anymore," and then they're kind of stuck. And I, I just wanted to know if you can address that or clarify it some, because I don't maybe have the whole picture.
Any change to ordinances of the city or to, you know, zoning classifications or to zoning rule, literally zoning ordinances, or almost any policy put forth by council you can imagine usually has a public hearing accompanying it, and it's on a public agenda before we would make that change, because the council, of course, would have to vote to do it.
So, it's their responsibility to be up on that?
Yes. I mean, literally, a board of directors of the city would be the council, so administration really can't change any policy direction without first having approval from, and during a public hearing from the council.
Okay.
And those are announced through the newspaper, the Fairfield Ledger, because that, that's our outlet? So, you know, those people who want to stay informed should get the ledger.
The other thing that we can assure you...
Can I say that?
Just like what you went through with getting your mail notice tonight, that cost the city about 40 cents a person times 7,000 notices. If you make any substantial change in this revitalization plan, which every five or 10 years, you have to look at what the state legislature did, and you have to look at whether there are some reasons to make some changes. When that happens, we have to go through the process of notifying the occupants and the title owners again. So, we're going to have to do that again, not just have it on the agenda, but we're going to have to go through that all-notice process again, give 30 days advance, and come in with a new and revised plan. So, there isn't anything that's sudden or abrupt or surprising about that procedure. That's about a 70-year-old procedure that's in the state code. So, I want to assure you, there's more notice than you're probably imagining is required for this, okay?
Okay, but grandfathering, do you think it's not just two sections? Would the state, in the state you provide, if you change something that's generally changing the grading of codes, status or something with international standards?
One of the reasons we're adopting...
You're going to be grandfathered on most instances.
She's asking if there's some things that are grandfathered that could just stay that way and...
Unless there's good reason.
Yeah. What, what we really have going on tonight is, we have a plan that was intended to last from 2004 to 2009. We needed to update it. We had the city finance council in Des Moines give us recommendations on the update. We have an ordinance that's been in effect since 1990. We're going to amend and revise the ordinance to take into effect the new and updated plan after we adopt this plan. We had to back up and do the notice to occupants and owners first, and believe me, it's taken some time. So, that's where we're at now. We're, we're complying with the formalities of the code. There isn't anything that needs to be grandfathered because the ordinance has never been repealed. The ordinance has been in effect since 1990, and it stays, it's still in effect. But we are going to add to the ordinance and add to the plan again, so the new ordinance will reflect the plan that's different than what we've been operating. So, when we get all done with that, we won't have a grandfathering. Right now, we have people that would still be eligible for abatement under the old plan, February 1, that'll be eligible for more under the new plan.
Lisa, are your additional questions specific to this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
But also, it's pretty technical, and sometimes I don't follow all of it, and so, I'm really glad if it's being recorded so that we can hear it later.
That's the case, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because sometimes I understand the discussion part hasn't been recorded on the TV, and it would be really great if we could have the whole thing recorded.
No, it's being recorded.
Okay, good. So, this point about relocation, my, my understanding is, in Waterloo, there's been a lot of bulldozing of large areas. I don't know if you know about this? And if there's a state legislative policy to not, you know, prohibit having, having people to have to move, where are they moving to if, if it's so extensive in the city? And maybe you don't know about this, but that kind, you know, that kind of raised some questions for me.
I haven't spoken to the city manager of Waterloo lately, but I know there is, the last time I talked to him, there was going to be some good development going on there, but I think those are probably the result of, of your normal pattern and routine development. I haven't read anything lately that there was any kind of a, a big push by the government involved in that. I think that, I think that's just a natural development process on a, a piece of acres that was owned appropriately for that.
Because it was blighted.
Oh, see, there, yeah. So, there was favor to that area being developed then, and, and so obviously, it, it worked.
But, uh...
I guess the issue is that, that homeowners are not going to be, you know...
Displaced.
Displaced, you know, and asked to leave. That's not going to happen here in Fairfield.
Right. But see, this is another thing, I, I know someone who does real estate in Iowa, and it just seemed contradictory to what you said. She told me that her property was demolished without any notice. They didn't tell her. And I was like, really surprised, and then it seems like there'd be, I think she was, you know, she was a landowner, she was a landlord, so...
I don't know that that's actually legal. I, I, there's a lot of public, there's a lot of public...
I agree.
She would have an excellent civil case if that were to happen.
And, you know, we can't go into what happened to her. We don't have the details, so let's go. We don't have the details, so let's go on to the, what's your next question?
That's it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, additional comments. Okay, can you please come to the front? I think this, if we can, we'll try to make this the last one.
Al Gabus, I live in town, I'm a renter on Fifth Street. So I just have a bunch of philosophical points, but they are to the point. And it's, what do you want the city to look like? What do you mean by development? What does development mean? Long-term, long, way long-term, 300 years from now? What do we want? What did the founding fathers want? This, you know, someone mentioned the railroads and, and how it helped the country. Anyway, so second philosophical, what kind of people do you want to live here? And how do you want to attract those people? And do we even have desirable people here now? And that, that's sort of, these are the things that I sort of run over in my own mind.
At least the ones that are in this room, I think are.
Yeah.
At least us.
You know, I have this much money to spend. Do I want to, do I want to buy a lot or build a building here in town? And I'm, I'm on the fence about it. It's quite a unique place. It's not utopia, but when I listen to economic development, it, it raises some alarms. I mean, we incentivized Walmart. Why? There's a Super Walmart 20 miles to our west and 20 miles to our east. Not discuss that, but. Another point here, how does any of this incentivization contribute to self-sufficiency and sustainability? And I know those are buzzwords and that there's a lot of rhetoric thrown around about sustainability and self-sufficiency. You know, and we, you know, incentivizing, it's incentivizing. We want to incentivize something that we all, you know, will improve our quality of life. And, you know, a giant come and go, I don't know. Doesn't improve my quality of life, you know, anyway, as far as I can tell. I mean, I love that swale they've got up front, but man, have you ever seen what they sell inside? It's, you know. More philosophical stuff. Yeah, yeah, so we want to make the city attractive to the people that we would like. I mean, it just sounds like discrimination, oh, you know. But it seems like the whole discussion is about money. It's about money and increasing our tax. I don't think increasing our tax base necessarily improves my quality of life, you know. Maybe it'll attract more millionaires, maybe, you know, Oprah will move here or something, but, you know. And, and, you know, the idea of creating low, you know, a housing for low-income individuals, wow, you know. I mean, you know, who wants to live in a, you know, and in, in, in a, in a, I don't want to live in a condo building. I don't. I wouldn't.
Mr. Gabus?
Yeah.
Do you use our library?
Do I use whose library?
The public library just south of here.
Who's speaking? Oh, you are, okay. I'm sorry, I'm listening to speakers over there.
Yeah, okay. Do you use the public library? Are you a car holder?
Occasionally, occasionally, yeah.
Okay. An improvement in the tax base of the city would increase the capability of our library to have more literature, more computers, more newspapers, more periodicals, all of those things. So you do receive a benefit, even as a renter.
Yeah.
Here in this community by incentivizing someone to come and either build a new property, build a new development, or improve their own home for them to live in.
Yeah.
So, you know, your, your argument that this really doesn't do anything for the entire community is, or you in general, doesn't, doesn't really wash.
No, no. We have to, I think we have to divorce money from what it is we want the community to look at.
But what it is that people want in this community is improvement in streets and improvement in the library.
Okay.
And improvement in recreational facilities.
Okay.
And all of those need to be done with money.
Okay.
Okay. It's either increasing user fees.
Okay, I see.
Or it's increasing property values.
Yeah, yeah.
Or it's increasing the population in the community through businesses.
Yeah.
And commercial ventures. And I don't know how else to answer your question.
It sounds very typical.
Because it's illogical to think that we can stay where we're at without increasing our base to improve all of the things that we consider quality of life issues here in Fairfield.
Mr. Gabus, are you opposed to the ordinance? Or this, yeah.
Am I opposed to the ordinance? I'm, I'm, yeah.
The plan. Yeah, I should say the plan.
I'd just like to see deeper thinking. I'd just like to see deeper thinking on the part of you all about what exactly this does. That's all.
Okay.
Perhaps, human beings are not only physical beings, but also fiscal beings. And perhaps, the tide, the only tide, in fact, that raises all ships would be that of the economical tide in building our tax base. Perhaps.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, one more question.
I understood that part of the commercial possibility is to have 25% of commercial and then the rest residential is apartments or something like that, correct? Right, that's in there, right? Yes?
I think that's, that could be an opinion of what makes a good.
It's section K, section K. It talks about, one of the definitions for commercial is to have 25% business, which I understand is at the ground floor, and then residential as well.
That reads, "Commercial includes," this is in the commercial section, "commercial includes property that consists of three or more separate living quarters with at least 75% of the space used for residential purposes."
That's what I mean, yes. Yes. So that, we are in a small town and we're not New York City. And in New York City or downtown or, you know, they have a lot of that kind of thing. They have businesses on the bottom and then apartments on the top. And I guess it's up to each individual's discretion if, if they want to combine those two. But I'm concerned that, my understanding is that other cities who have tried that, particularly in small towns, don't have.
Lisa, you're completely misunderstanding what this is about.
Okay, please clarify then.
This is, we're not saying how people have to develop and whether they should mix commercial and residential. We're just saying, do you qualify for a tax abatement? You, we're, already if you're a commercial industrial, you qualify as a tax abatement. Do you have three or more apartments? Then that's commercial industrial, you qualify under that. Do you not have three or more apartments? Then that's residential and you qualify under that. That's all this is about.
Okay, so it's not like we're, you're trying to promote that certain kind of thing. Because it didn't seem, it doesn't seem very successful in other areas. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that, John. I appreciate that. Okay, so at this time, we will close the public hearing and I'll take comments from the council. Any comments? Okay, if there are no comments, we will just move on to the resolution adopting the proposed Fairfield Commercial Industrial Residential Urban Revitalization Plan. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Revelinsky, second by Rasmussen. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call a roll. Revelinsky?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Now, this is the first reading of the ordinance that, that goes with this plan. So it's the amended and restated ordinance designating the Fairfield Commercial Industrial Residential Urban Revitalization Area of the City of Fairfield, Iowa. And it's related to ordinance number 1001.
Move from the first to second reading.
Okay. We have a, a motion to move from the first to second reading from Revelinsky, a second from Hamas. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll. Revelinsky?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no mayor's report. City attorney, do you, John, do you have anything additional tonight? I think you spoke enough. All right. Committee and board reports, quiet zone.
Hey, it's my last update.
Sure it is.
All right, well, as of last Tuesday, Fairfield's quiet zone has been officially established. It isn't, it isn't perfect yet. There's still a few engineers who haven't gotten the memo, but it's 90-something. Yeah, yeah. So I invited Chris Novlet from the FRA. Are you here tonight, Chris? Oh, I guess not. Going to have a, an operation lifesaver presentation, but I suppose we'll have to put that off to another time. But we just want to reemphasize the importance of staying off the tracks as pedestrians. You are trespassing if you're walking on the tracks. You're putting yourself in severe danger and you're going to get honked at, which is going to make everyone mad that they're going to hear the horns again and then you'll be public enemy number one. So just stay off the tracks. It's, it's not worth it. And if you hear, if you're coming up to the, the tracks and, you know, take a look to the right, take a look to the left, it's just worth that extra check because the FRA guy I talked to said, always expect a, a train. It's the, their general rule of thumb is just be aware. So, yeah, we're going to be in a transition period where people are used to hearing the horns and figuring out if they're going to try to beat the train by going around the gate. Well, that option's gone. So you might get stuck behind a, a long train a little bit more often now, but I recommend using the Second Street Underpass when possible. And then we'll do our operation lifesaver at a future council meeting.
Great, thank you. So now we're going to move down to our last resolution, authorizing McClure Engineering to perform water and wastewater utility fee rate studies, but do you want to talk about that, Kevin?
Yes, actually Terry is here tonight to give us a presentation. It's a part of this, a presentation of our progress so far in our sewer work following our smoking course. Now we have a few more, a few more things to talk about, including that and an update on where we're at in the process and of where we're going after the next couple of months when we have actually analyzed all the information that we've been able to collect. And also included in that is a resolution to do fee rate studies in our water and sewer departments that we had talked about earlier, as well as later in our next meeting, we'll be coming forward with a, a couple of other portions of this stuff, including the stormwater utility. That'll be on our next agenda for approval, as well as a contract for a couple of things that Terry will be talking about. But I'll let him explain that to you and introduce his crew. Thank you for coming, Terry. I can, yes.
You can leave it where it was at, that way there's a possibility of.
And then people can see it as well.
Okay, I'll probably mess you up there. Probably need to come in closer to it.
While we're waiting, Kevin, Kevin asked, what I've got here is an agenda that I'm going to pass out to you. Kevin asked that we kind of do an overview of the work we've been doing for the last couple of years. So the agenda that we'll put in front of you is going to kind of outline how we're going to go through that. Probably about 15, 20 minutes of presentation, so I'll try to get through it quickly and I'll introduce myself while he's getting that ready. I'm Terry Lutz with McClure Engineering Company and this is Kurt Campman with our firm. And we also have Casey Shafbo in the back of the room with our firm. Kurt and I are going to do most of the presentation. Why don't we just get, well, I'll wait, I'll wait. Generally what, while this is coming, we're going to spend the first part of the discussion. He wanted us to update and give you kind of an overview of what we've been doing the last couple of years.
He's here now, so I'll wait. I messed up by not bringing these things. Can we get a copy of this presentation?
Yeah, we've got copies, yeah, we just handed those up now. Okay, what I wanted to cover here was, first of all, we'll go through the SSES. That stands for sanitary sewer evaluation study. And so the items underneath that, one through four, are what we're going to kind of talk about first. And these are the items that are on the slide. And then what's on the agenda tonight is item two, the Water and Sewer Utility Rate and Cost of Service Study Contract. And then Kevin wanted me to talk a little bit about stormwater development and then we'll just open it up for general questions. So that's kind of the framework. I know the utility committee has heard this and so bear with us because you'll probably get a lot of the same information again. Okay, first of all, we want to just recap. We were retained in 2010 by the city to look at your sanitary sewer collection system and your wastewater treatment plant. In fact, the project, as I recall, started actually looking at the wastewater treatment plant. And a part of that was the fact that you also have in the sewer collection system in the city, you have sanitary sewer overflows, SSOs that they're called. That's again, stands for sanitary sewer overflow. So when you have wet weather conditions, you have water that is getting into your sanitary sewer system and in various places around the town, because there's not enough capacity in the sewer system and you're getting more water than the system can handle, raw sewage is discharged during certain rain events in, out of these manholes and so forth into the receiving streams and across the ground. That is a no-no with DNR the last 10 years. DNR and EPA have, have really put an emphasis on working with cities to develop long-range plans to eliminate those sanitary sewer overflows. And so when we started here, we did not have a very good handle on the total flows reaching the wastewater treatment plant because a lot of the flow leaves the system upstream of the wastewater treatment plant. And without knowing what those flows are, if we're to eliminate those SSOs, then what is the flow that we could anticipate getting down at the wastewater treatment plant if we, if we close off all the bottlenecks upstream? And so the first thing we needed to do is address that and look at ways in which we can model the system hydraulically and then ultimately put together what we call a hydraulic strategy that routes those flows through the collection system down to the treatment plant, recognizing you're not going to fix all those problems today, or probably not over the next 15 or 20 years. But through hydraulic modeling of the system, we can predict what those flows may be and then present a hydraulic strategy to the Department of Natural Resources that they can get approved through EPA that allows you to move forward with improvements, make significant improvements in water quality that is receiving the waste and then make improvements to your systems accordingly and put together a long-range plan that financially makes sense to the community, yet still improves the environment as we go along. So that's, that was kind of our approach to this. We did initially, this is a little bit different direction than what the city was heading when, before we were retained. But in 90 days, we prepared this thick report that many of you may have seen. It was just a plan of action that told the department at that time what it was we were going to do over the course of the next couple of years. So that kind of set the tone for all of the work that we've done since this time. And so again, what we're going to do tonight is present the information that we've collected since we did this report to, in terms of where we're at today. And then we also want to talk about what needs to get done to take the data that we've put, put together now or that we're assembling now and move it forward to the next stage. So with that, on August 11th, we presented the plan of action. And then since that time, we've been working on the actual field collection data and, and collecting all of the information that we need to, to do the hydraulic strategy and so forth, including putting flow meters into the system that we'll talk about in a minute. We've got that coming up. I'm going to have Kurt go through and talk about the data that we've collected, what we have found in the system, and he'll take it from there.
Well, as Terry said, my name's Kurt Campman. I've been working on directing the, the field and technical aspect of the, of the project and, and the data gathering. But first, before I started that, I would just want to touch base on the collection system and just give a brief overview of it to make sure that we're all on the same page. So the city's sanitary collection system consists of approximately 295,000. So the city's sanitary collection system consists of approximately 295,000 linear feet of pipe. That's over fifty-five miles of pipe that are in the ground today. So that's a substantial investment of pipe that's in the ground that needs to be maintained and worked with. And along with that, there's over 1,150 manholes in the system as well, so it's a substantial system. As Terry kind of alluded to, due to the amount of extraterrestrial water that's getting into the system, when you have wet weather, rain falls in the ground, you have inflow into the system through things like curb inlets that are tied into the sanitary sewer, even though they're not supposed to be, or just leaky pipe joints due to age, all that extra water can get into the sanitary sewer. If the pipes aren't big enough, you cause hydraulic bottlenecks. Places upstream of those bottlenecks will surcharge, the water starts to build up in the sewer system, and you can have SSO events, that's the sanitary sewer overflow. And there's really kind of two SSO structures in the city of Fairfield. One is the, just a regular manhole where the surcharging is significant enough to pop right out of the top of the manhole, where the water's actually removed the lid because of the pressure that's built up, and it'll go outside of the manhole through that. That's shown on the left-hand side, so normal flow, everything's fine, the water's flowing through the pipe, but then if you look in the bottom left-hand corner, the water is popping out the top during high-flow conditions and high surcharge. The other type of SSO structure that we have in the city of Fairfield is the, more of a constructed SSO, where because of this condition being a longstanding condition for the city, over time, there have been pipes installed into the manholes that are known to surcharge that will relieve the pressure and allow, keep that surcharging from getting too great, to keep it from getting into people's basements and other things. So this is just a schematic of the city's sanitary sewer system. The town is generally divided in half, west and east. The dividing line is roughly Highway One, it's a little bit further to the west than that, but generally Highway One. On areas to the west, all the flow will come down the west side of the town into a single trunk sewer, eighteen-inch and go into the Grease Lightning Lift Station. Will they be pumped over to the east side of the collection system? And all of the flow from the east side of the collection system will come down the two trunk sewers that are going around the outside of town, and work their way down into the wastewater treatment plant. And the wastewater treatment is in the very bottom right-hand corner, right where it says Fairfield, Iowa. So that's kind of how the system lays out. So when we took a look at this in the Plan of Action, one of the things that became apparent is, due to the fact that there's twenty SSOs in the system, we looked at where those SSOs were occurring, and it became apparent that there were, really what we were going to need to find out is, what is the capacity of these trunk sewers, and also how much water is getting into the system? And so to handle the first part of that question, we needed to determine the capacity of those trunk sewers in order to build a 3D model of that system. And so in order to accomplish that, we inspected 315 manholes out in the system, including all of the SSO manholes, and evaluated their depth, the number of pipes coming in, the size of those pipes, and the rim to invert elevations of each of those pipes. And also generally recording the structural condition of those manholes, and evaluating, is there infiltration or inflow getting in through the walls? Is the rebar showing in the manhole because it's being exposed to corrosive environment? Just gathering a general condition assessment of those manhole inspections. And then along with that, we also did mapping and inventory, where we took GPS shots using GPS survey equipment to locate each of those manholes in space, so that when we take the GPS shots, which tell us the exact location of the manholes, along with the rim to invert elevations and the pipe sizes that we gathered from the manhole inspections, we can actually build a three-dimensional hydraulic model, or physical representation of what the sewer system is. And so that gives us an accurate representation of the system. Now, that's only one piece of the puzzle. The second piece of the puzzle is knowing how much flow is coming into that system from the different parts of town. And so what we did is we took the city and divided it up into nineteen different districts. Now, conducted a flow study from April to July of 2012. Now, those nineteen meters, we originally had planned for fourteen, but as we got into the inspections, looking at the SSOs, it became apparent that we need to add a few more. But to realize cost savings, and to keep our flow study in line with the budget we've prepared, we used twelve of McClure's flow meters, and then also used seven of the city's flow meters, and worked with that as well, to realize some savings there and keep our project within budget. During the flow study, as everybody's aware of, it wasn't a particularly wet year that you would typically like to have during a flow study. We generally, when we do a flow study, we're typically looking for some rainfall events. A rainfall event is described in terms of its return frequency. So a two-month storm would be less significant than a one-year storm, would be less significant, or than a ten-year storm would be more significant, and so on and so forth. What we typically look for in a flow monitoring period is to have a one-year storm event, or greater. Perhaps you get a two-year, a five-year, a ten-year. A ten-year design storm event would be a storm that has a 10% chance of occurring in any year. To give a kind of a feel for what that size of storm would be, a ten-year storm event would be roughly two inches per hour, a one-year storm event would be, or a six-inch storm event would be, a six-month storm event would be about an inch an hour, so it gives you kind of a feel for what kind of significant rainfall we're looking at. During the flow monitoring period, because it was kind of a drier year, we only saw, we saw eight significant, or notable rainfall events. Most of those were two-month and below, so very common storms. We did see some three-month, some four-month, and we did see one six-month storm. So it's not as significant as we would like to see, but it did provide us useful information, the data we did gather. In terms of actual numbers, the average dry weather we saw during the flow study for the entire community was 964,000 gallons a day, which is right where you'd expect it for a city the size of Fairfield with 9,500 people, 100 gallons per capita. You'd be looking at 950,000 gallons, so it's right there where it should be. In terms of peak hourly wet weather flow, and I'll have it go into the next slide, we actually saw a peaking factor of 10. So keep in mind that we only saw a six-month storm event, and we saw an increase in flow from 960,000 gallons a day up to 9.6 million gallons a day. So that's a very large increase for the type of, or the level of rainfall that we saw. And what the Fairfield has committed to DNR in previous documents and previous work is that the SSOs would be greatly eliminated or reduced for a ten-year storm event. So there's some significant rainfall and significant amounts of water that are going to need to be dealt with, based on these flow monitoring results. One additional thing, so that, I'll have you go back. So the, one additional thing that the flow monitoring tells us is that it helps us also locate the areas that need to do further testing. So one of the later tests that we completed is smoke testing. And if you live in the city, you probably saw our crews around smoke. We partnered with French Renniker around that. They provided two staff persons, along with our two-person staff, to complete that smoke testing, which was basically isolating a section of sewer and injecting a white smoke vapor into the sewer system slightly under pressure, so that it can help us determine where there might be curb inlets or other types of defects where that smoke can get to the surface, and then it'll record those defects. But the flow monitoring helps us determine where we need to do that at, by looking for basins. Again, we had nineteen different basins throughout the town. And the flow monitoring helps us to determine where those basins are that are going to have those highest peaks, you know, those basins that are going from 900,000 gallons a day up to 9.6 million, or some other peaking factor that's significant. So after completing that flow monitor, we identified essentially the areas in red on this map that were areas where there was high levels of inflow, which would indicate that there was significant numbers of curb inlets or other types of defects that would cause a significant amount of water to get into the sanitary system. And of that, we partnered with the city and French Renniker to determine that we were going to smoke test the eastern half of the red portion of those basins, which are kind of circled in red there on the labels. And that's 117,000 linear feet of sewer. And so we completed that testing this past late summer, early fall. From those tests, we found some good results, well, good can be, depending on how you're looking at, I guess. But when we're doing a study like this, the good information is the information that starts to tell you, okay, there really is definable defects out there that you can fix. And so we divide the defects up into two different segments, the private defects and the public defects. The sanitary system in general is generally divided up where the sewer mains, the manholes, and the pump stations are all part of the public sanitary system. The private system includes the service laterals, which are what goes from the sewer main out in the street, or the public right-of-way, back to the individual's house. And a lot of times, it includes the joint that connects the service lateral to the sewer main as well. And so, as you can see from the two tables, from the private sanitary sewer system, we saw about one, for a ten-year type storm event, you'd be looking at roughly 1.2 million gallons of storm inflow that we identified the sources of that from. On the public side of the system, we found significantly more potential defect flow in about 8.9 million gallons per day. And if you look through that table, the one that kind of jumps out at you is defect number one, it's the curb inlets. There are sixty-nine different curb inlets in the areas, in just the areas that we tested in that 170,000, or 117,000 feet, that contributed 5 million gallons a day to the inflow problem for the city of Fairfield. So in a sense, it's a good finding, and in another sense, it's a bad finding, but it's a definable, it's a definable defect that can be fixed in the future if it's cost-effective to do so. And at the bottom there, you can see a picture of what that test kind of looked like if you didn't happen to see it in front of your home this past summer and fall. That's a picture of just a curb inlet right on the side of the street where smoke is coming out of the curb inlet. And so we know there's some sort of cross-connection in between the sanitary sewer main and the storm sewer system. Two other just general photos, just to kind of give a flavor for what this looks like. On the left, bottom-left-hand side, you have a defective manhole. Again, with the dry ground conditions we had this year, it wasn't great for flow monitoring, but it was really good for smoke testing, because the drier the ground is, the better able the smoke is to get up to the surface and help us show where those, you know, cracks in the piping, or cracks in the manholes, or those types of defects are. So you can see in the left-hand corner, you have a manhole that has a good number of defects. A lot of smoke is getting out from, out of the system and getting back to the surface. And that's important, because if smoke can get out, water can also get back in. And on the right-hand side, you see the same thing. That's actually a service lateral, it's a picture taken on somebody's front lawn. And you can kind of see right where that service lateral goes. Got every joint's probably smoking on that service lateral, so again, definable defect that can be fixed if it's cost-effective. So that's what the smoke testing really accomplishes for us. So what's next in the SSES? Generally, the field activities are basically done. So we'll now be taking this information and analyzing it and putting together a large capital improvement plan. Some of the field activities that could be completed yet are rainfall simulation, where smoke testing kind of tells you that there is a cross-connection, but it doesn't necessarily tell you how that cross-connection exists. Rainfall simulation is storm sewer flooding, where you would flood an individual section of storm sewer, and then have a sanitary, or a televising camera running up the sanitary main at the same time. And you can actually see where that cross-connection exists between the two systems. We're actually not going to provide that service, but we'll work with the city to determine where those best sites would be to complete. Also, we might be looking at some closed-circuit televising, and we'll be working with city staff to discuss whether or not we want to pursue that or not. But in general, what we're looking at now is, so we've completed all these field activities, you know, we've gathered all this information, and now it's really about developing the hydraulic strategy, determining how much rehabilitation do we want to do in the system, and how much upgrades do we want to provide on those trunk sewers on the west and the east side, and the Grease Lightning Lift Station? What capacity improvements do we need to make, and what's the balance of cost there? To find the most cost-effective point between rehabilitating everything, or just building really big trunk sewers and pump stations and a wastewater treatment plant? And it's finding that happy medium that's going to provide the city the most cost-effective solution, and then lay that out in terms of a five-year and longer capital improvement plan, to give a direction and a plan for the city to follow over the coming years.
Yeah, I'll take the next slide with it. As Kurt was saying, one of the main reasons you do all of this, and I know the city spent a lot of money the last couple of years, and it seems like all you're doing is spending money for studies. But your sanitary sewer collection system and your wastewater treatment plant is probably the most expensive public infrastructure thing you have to manage. And when you get to a situation where you have SSOs, you have DNR leaning on you, you have a wastewater treatment plant that needs significant improvements, our strategy is to look at the system kind of methodically, and look at different pieces, and then help you plan your capital expenditures where you're going to get the biggest bang for your buck. And so a lot of the collection system work that we're doing, and how that impacts the wastewater treatment plant, will all come together in the piece of the work that we're about to finish here as part of the data collection. And then the next piece is the actual facility plan of that. But this is just a general schematic here, it's hard to read in your slide, I just wanted to put it in here. This is actually kind of a schematic of your wastewater treatment plant and how flow goes through your wastewater treatment plant. At the end of the day, what you're being challenged to do by EPA and DNR is to close the leaks in your collection system, so we no longer discharge raw sewage over those, out of those manholes and into the street. So when those get closed, the water that's coming into the system, you've got two choices. We rehab the sewer so the water doesn't get into the system, or, and we can only do that to a certain extent, no sewer system is completely tight, all systems leak. So our job here, as Kurt was saying, is to do a cost-effective analysis based on the defects that we have found, what's it cost to eliminate those defects, to fix the sewer, to eliminate a certain gallon of flow, versus transporting and treating that water down to the treatment plant and routing it through the treatment plant? Obviously, the more water we take to the treatment plant, the bigger we have to make the treatment plant. So if we can eliminate it upstream more cost-effectively than it takes to transport and treat it, and treat it at the treatment plant, then that's where we want to see you spend your money, where you can get the biggest bang for your buck. So it's a lot of work, we're spending about probably 1% of probably your total investment that you're going to be making over the next twenty or thirty years in the study cost. And so I want to just put that in perspective while we get, we hear it all the time, that all we're doing for two years is spending money and studying and smoking up the town. It is for a good purpose if you go through it in a manner that we're doing. As Kurt mentioned, we've only smoke-tested half of your city. Our theory is, don't do a lot of, we have to do enough studies to develop the strategy that we need to, but in terms of the detailed studies to make the final decision whether you're going to re-line this pipe or rebuild this section of pipe, you want to do, you want to, in our opinion, spend the money on those investigations at the time you're ready to make the capital investment. What we see far too many cities doing is a lot of investigative work without looking at the big picture and developing a plan, so when they get the data back, they make improvements. And so the data sits on the shelf for ten, fifteen, twenty years. The city finally starts to wrestle with the problem. By the time they're ready to fix something, the data's no good anymore. That's part of the reason we did not smoke-test the west side of town. We tried to keep costs down, we think the east side of town is where some of the low-hanging fruit is, and so we focused our studies on that. Then we're just going to make some interpolations of what might be happening on the west side of town, based on what we know about it, and based on what French Renniker's telling us. So we can kind of get you there without spending all of the money you need to right up front, without having to fix some things. So as we're getting down to the end now of getting our data collected and pulling this together, we're going to be analyzing whether it's more cost-effective, again, to rehab the system or treat it at the wastewater plant. And that's really where the rubber meets the road in this business, in terms of what we're trying to do here. And so that's what we're doing. And so that's what we're doing. This is just the wastewater plant. That's part of what we're looking at because ultimately it's got to go through this plant to get treated before it can get discharged to the stream. As I mentioned, back in 2011, when we did this first study, we, our firm does a lot of this kind of work. And so we have a pretty good handle on what we think we're going to see in a town. We can walk into about any size community and get kind of in the ballpark. And so when we did this initial study, we laid this out, which is, I won't go through it in detail, but it was kind of a 20-year plan in terms of gross capital costs that we were able to kind of estimate at the time based on some flow assumptions, based on the size of your community and previous work that had been done by French Reniker and others here that we were able to draw on. And what this does was it was trying to capitalize in a five-year increment where we thought maybe spending large, or spending the significant amounts of capital in areas where you would see the biggest return on that from the biggest environmental improvement in terms of gross, you know, five-year increments where we thought this thing might shake out. So our challenge now is to take these assumptions we made two or three years ago, the hypothesis, if you will, that we created, and then prove that up or down based on the data that we've collected. And so ultimately, what we're working for is a refinement of this count, of this schedule here that will work with, with Kevin and the staff in terms of, you know, what makes sense in terms of how we're going to go forward and improve these, the system. The last slide here we have is, is what's next in developing the framework for a solution. The next is the SSES. And again, what we're doing is upgrading the wastewater treatment plant to handle the post-SSO removal flows. So in that, once we have defined what we think the ultimate flow rates will be and how the hydraulic strategy would work, then we will, we will roll that into what's called an anti-degradation report because we anticipate you're going to be putting more stuff in the stream than you're currently permitted to be able to do. And once you're that, once you're to that point, you have to go through a relatively new process. It's called anti-degradation analysis. It's a process we have to go through with the state to look at different alternatives, which is exactly what we're doing, looking at all the alternatives to prove up that what you're ultimately going to recommend is the most cost-effective, environmentally-friendly solution. So that's what is required in the anti-degradation report. Then once that is approved, the next step is to complete the facility plan, which takes the flows and the hydraulic strategy and then routes it through the wastewater treatment plant with the ultimate plan of the wastewater treatment facility itself. And also we'll look at the long-range plan with your collection system in terms of where the priorities will be to spend the capital in the collection system. That all gets wrapped through here in the anti-dag report and the facility plan. And then ultimately, then that leads to the expansion of the overall wastewater treatment plant. And we knew from day one, your biggest need at the wastewater treatment plant is what's called the headworks. When the water comes down, when the wastewater comes into the treatment plant, the first thing it hits is the headworks of the treatment plant. And frankly, your headwork system is practically non-existent. It is very, very old. It's a very dangerous system and it need, it is in need of repair in a major way. But we felt it was not prudent to go spend money on the headworks until we have the rest of this stuff figured out. So that's where we're going, trying to get you to a point where you can upgrade that wastewater plant, hopefully in 2014. The schedule we've laid out, if you go to the agenda that I passed out before we started our presentation, we've got some rough dates that we're proposing here if you want to move forward with this. In terms of completing the SSES, I'm under section four, next step to complete the facility plan. First bullet point is complete the SSs field data report. That's what we're working on right now. We anticipate to have that done in February. The anti-dag analysis and so forth. Once our contract is approved for that, if it was approved, we would, we would try to have that finished by February as well of 13. With the facility plan, then following that, after the approval of the anti-dag, we have to have one done before we do the other. So the facility plan would come through in February and May. Most of that data is being prepared as we do this work, so it's basically part of that process. It gets submitted to DNR. We would anticipate a few months for their approval. And this is probably the best-case scenario whereby you could be under design on that headworks facility the second half of 2013, assuming all of this went through DNR's approval, to where we would design it, get it ready to bid in the spring of 2014, for construction to happen in 14 and 15. So that, that's very similar to the schedule we laid out in the original facility plan, trying to stay on that schedule. Some of those things need to get approved for us to finish up the facility plan and the anti-dag report and move forward with that. So before we get into the rate study, any questions? We throw a lot of stuff at you, but that's kind of where we're going and where we've been. And so over the next couple of months, you're going to see us pull this data together and come back to you with a strategy for what we've laid out.
I have my glasses with me, but in the slide before this, I think you had a total amount, so many million per five years, is that what it was?
Yes.
On the bottom there in the blue, so I can't really read that. Could you?
Yeah, I'll go through it.
Yes, those are estimates.
Very gross estimates. In the 2012 to 2016, it's a wide range. We had 10.4 to 18.2. The next five years, 3.5 to 5.7. The next five years was 3.3 to 7.2. And the next one was 1.8 to 4.2. I think if you add all that up, on the high range, it's probably in the $30 million range. On the low range, it's probably in the $20 million range. So large, large ranges because we were really dealing with a lot of unknowns at that time. And those are the numbers we're trying to get pulled together.
Yeah, important to note is that how we fall in the dispensations that you see individually in those five-year periods, that's what the fee rate study is really all about.
Correct.
You're going to create a fee that is slightly ahead of your improvement. So you're going to be, you know, crewing a little bit of funds, looking forward to doing those improvements. As you all know, how your timing falls may mean that you have an interest payment plus a principal and interest payment almost the first year of doing such a project, depending on what the project is. We're going to be working with French Renickers, city engineers, do conveyance work as well as a part of this. So those, those breadth of numbers in those five-year clips, a lot of that is because you don't know which kind of conveyance changes you're going to make at the same time you're making facility changes as well. And those facility changes that we're making, very good point that we're, we're going to eliminate the overflows in the system. So you're going to see the true flow, the true measure of the flow that you have making it to your facility. But, you know, part of that also is that we're going to build in capacity to the changes that we make at the facility, future growth capacity. So two important points with that.
Yeah, you know, one point Kurt made, if you remember the number, your current dry weather flows are about 960,000 gallons a day. We measured flows of 9.1 million, a factor of 10. If all of this occurred at the same time, we actually think your total system is seeing flows well in excess of 20 to 25 million gallons. We don't think you're going to have to design for that because we found several things that can help eliminate some of those flows, reduce them. But that's what's going on in the system. In fact, it could be well in excess of that. What we were hoping to, I wanted to touch on this for just a minute because at one time, the utility committee approved us to spend another, it was the driest year on record, worst time in the world to do flow metering. So your timing was perfect if you want to look at it that way. We like wet weather when we're doing flow metering. We did not get any in the spring. We got a little bit, enough to where we could kind of get this thing to where we're halfway comfortable. You had authorized us to go back and reinstall the meters for 30 more days in October. We were watching, because October, the best time to flow meter is April. A lot of different attorneys ended up with 20 or 22-year schedule with EPA. So the communities we've worked with, we've tried to, I mean, most of them now have understand that this is kind of the way it is. So let's work within it. We've got to improve the environment. How can we manage it and most cost-effectively spend our, our capital to solve the problem? When you think about it, you really probably have, while this doesn't solve your problem, and grant funds do, can come down. I mean, if this is a big thing for the nation, if they want to start putting new money in it, potential getting grant funds is likely. We have low-interest loan programs through the SRF program, which I think you're already having.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to be very aggressive at a, you know, at approaching ways to, ways to help on a fiscal level fix our problems. One important thing to note, though, is you're seeing, you know, time schedule and five-year clips. And really, the duty we have here is to eliminate these overflows and to get a system that technically works. So all along the point of us working our problems out here, we feel like we're going to get an extravagant result from this eastern side attack, phase one, if you will, because the western side would be phase two. But we feel like we're going to get an inordinate amount of benefit from doing this eastern side. How many SSOs we will eliminate, it's hard to say right now, but it could be a lot of them. But the point is to remove those SSOs. So once we actually reach that point, there's probably going to be a reassessment of where the city is at that point.
Correct.
You know, the engineer, our city engineer is going to be involved, our consultant may be involved, certainly departments are going to be involved. Where do we think we are now? We're talking into DNR on a different footing altogether. Of course, we're different people then. We're not people with problems. We're people who feel like we have problems we'd like to address. But the DNR doesn't have that problem because the overflows are their issue. So once we get to that point, we'll reassess in about eight to 10 years. I think all of us would say eight to 10 years would be about that period of time.
Yeah, exactly. One thing I want to clarify, Kurt just corrected me. I said two times the average median household income, 2% of the median household.
Bunch of money.
Thank you. I'm glad he came. I'm getting a little old. Bear with me. It's 2% of the median household income is how EPA defines whether or not you can afford to do this.
Still scary if EPA is telling you anything.
Yeah.
Directly.
So that was $80 a month for Spencer.
It's still the same number, yep.
And so, but it, so it can get up that high. And so we're talking maybe even for Fairfield, $40, $50 a month, everybody's going to be paying.
I wouldn't say that at this point. Keep in mind, keep in mind, let's say you had a $30 million expenditure. That's a big number in today's dollars. Literally, you have, if EPA says you've got to have this done in 20 years, you generally have probably 40 years to pay for it because the last improvement doesn't need to be in place for 20 years, which you could bond for and pay for and other. So really, when you start looking at it, a 40-year window of payment of capital investments, and then you narrow it down to where you have your biggest bang for your buck. I'll give you the Spencer scenario real quick. $33 million when we finished the study. For about $12 million that they're spending today, it resulted in about a $10 increase in their sewer bills to the average customer. And that's going to eliminate about 80%, 80 to 85% of the flow getting into the stream in the first couple of years that we're doing the work. So now they're positioned for the next 17 years to go into the collection system and start making improvements with money that they can raise. If a street needs to be fixed and we're going to tear the street up, let's go do the sewer at that same time. Does it make sense to fix the private service line? If so, is that a cost that the private property owner pays? So as you work through it, our goal here is to, again, get you the biggest bang for the buck with a reasonable amount of rate increase that your community can afford, which is going to be defined by you, but to still accomplish the bulk of the work within a 20-year window. So it sounds onerous at the beginning and it is a big number. You just have to work through it. So when you work through all of that, I think what EPA is seeing is that we can make improvements without breaking the bank. And they're giving you a lot of latitude in how you do it.
Yes, and right now, I mean, but we're basically, right now, we are in the process of quantity. We're getting quantities of statistical information. Qualitative decisions are going to come with that final facility report because at that point, we will be recommending to you a finished staff product. Our own city engineer, our consultant, and the various department heads who would have involvement in that are going to be giving recommendations for the improvements that we feel that you need to make. And at that time, we will know quite extensively what those costs are likely to be, what those timeframes are likely to be. But this certainly, the most drastic thing we're throwing at you when you say 30 million, I think in our own estimations, we're putting that to be somewhere around, depending on the, what is the economic atmosphere as far as interest rates go, to be somewhere between 22 and 25 million dollars over that same 30-year period.
It's not a very good answer, is it?
$10 a month is that and 50.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Did, did you want me to address the last, I had item three, the storm monitoring?
I would, but I'd also like to say, it's easy when we're in a certain position to search for our own comparables, isn't it? We do that as individuals, we do it as cities, we do it as businesses. An important thing when we're looking at others that don't have increased rates recently or may have lower rates than our own, we're not looking, the odds are because of the way our nation is right now. We're not looking at someone who is that way. We're looking at someone who's that way right now, who hasn't hired their consultant yet, who, whose city engineer hasn't plowed through the haze yet, you know, whatever the case may be. Those folks have probably not done the studies they need to do, the improvements that they need because it's endemic across the nation. We are not alone in this, and those with very low rates will soon have higher rates. Costs of doing businesses going up in our utilities.
One of the things you'll see in our rate study, if you approve that tonight, will be, we do a comparison for you with communities in your area and also of your size in the state. And depending on the rate methodology you put in place, we can show how you will benchmark against other communities. And it's very interesting, we've done this for years. It's interesting, you can tell exactly what cities have not addressed this yet because the ones that are, our curve looks just like this. And the ones that are in the low end of the curve in terms of their rates per month per user just have either ignored it or maybe they don't have the extent of the problem. But generally, over time, it costs so much to give wastewater to your treatment plant and to get it treated and to keep everything running. The big delta that's happening right now is that cities are finally being forced to deal with their combined sewers like Atumwa and Des Moines and Davenport and others, or SSOs like you guys. So dealing with that is going to create a delta in their sewer rates for a period of time. And then over time, we think those will probably.
With that, and naturally, many cities are making a choice because of this wonderful, you know, low rates that we have to make the investments they know they're going to make in five to 10 years right now because they're going to save, you know, $400, $500,000 over certain periods of years in doing that. So a couple, that's one really good reason. And that probably will remain the case for a large amount of the time that we're doing our improvements, low rates, I mean.
Did you want to take the stormwater utility discussion or do you want to delay it?
I guess I would introduce it by just saying, tonight's work for, for us as far as decision-making goes is do we proceed with fee rate studies for both water and sewer? And I, it's not listed on the agenda, but at the next meeting, we'll be bringing back to you on the agenda, do we proceed with the process that we think we need to undertake to install in the city a stormwater utility? Because this is the Peter Paul conversation really that's coming here with the stormwater utility. I do want Terry to go into that. But it's, of course, our major woe with our system. And so we'll be bringing that back as well as the next three major components of our sewer work, which are the anti-dag report, final facility report, what do we want to do? And then, of course, the actual engineering for the facility improvements and the conveyance improvements that we would like to do. So.